I'll just read the top of this and call the meeting to order. And if Joanne joins us, that will be fine. I don't check my email one more time to see if anything's there. No. Okay, so consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. So the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. So here's the link, and this is pretty common, and it's not a link to our webpage. But if you go to Wakefield Planning Board, the meetings, the meeting videos are in the top left, and then you can scroll through old videos as well, previous videos. So I'd like to call the Town of Wakefield Planning Board meeting, January 21st. I'm sorry, January 26th, I was reading this, 2021 to order. Uh, let's see, in attendance tonight, Matt Lowry, Vice Chair, Megan Minasali, so we do have enough people up. Hi, Joanne.
Hi.
Four out of five members. Nice to see you.
You too.
Yep, and Susan, our clerk, and Erin Kokinda, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Thanks for joining us. We do have a liaison to the Town Council, Jonathan Chines. I don't see him in attendance tonight. But that's, let's see, let's see, that's all right. So item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of minutes for January 12th, 2021. Did everybody get a chance to review? And does anybody have, if so, does anybody have any comments or corrections?
I've got no comments or corrections.
Okay, so somebody can make a motion to approve, to accept.
Make a motion to approve the regular planning board meeting minutes of January 12th, 2021.
A second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Scroll down. I think I heard Joanne, yeah. Awesome. Item number three on tonight's agenda. 225 Vernon Street, A and R Plan. Bill and Ken?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is David Dwyer. I'm with Audi and Dwyer surveyors on the surveyor who prepared the plan.
Okay.
The A and R consists of Lot A and B. I don't know if everybody has the plan. I can share my screen if you'd like.
I can give you permission to share. You should be able to go ahead and share now.
Sharing my Zoom screen. Is my plan on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see it on my screen, but.
Yep, it's zoomed in. Where you can see the actual, from Vernon Street to the triangle of Lot B.
Okay, so the division is Lot A and B. A is 26,494 square feet. B is 806 square feet. Lot B is to be, not to be considered a separate buildable lot, but is to be attached to Lot 7, which is number 24 Daniel Road. I think this is the second time that this property has been seen by your board members. And there was some deficiency in a prior plan, not done by my office, but this is what we've come up with, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer, and yes, I believe our board had a quick review in December. And while it seems a long time ago right now, we, it was the plan, the way it was laid out and the intent on what was happening. And I just wanted to see if any board members have any questions for Mr. Dwyer regarding the A and R plan in front of us. Well, that's unusual. We don't have any questions, which means that the plan definitely has crossed all the checklist that we have. Meaning showing the properties and the dimensions and where it is, and the understanding of what's happening where Lot B will become part of Lot 7.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did take a look at this previously and just kind of ran, since our A and R regulations are still relatively new. I've been kind of doing a courtesy of checking plans as they come in, just to make sure.
Right, appreciate that.
Yeah, the previous plan that we had, that was before us, was deficient in in meeting our rules and regs, so that's why it was it was not accepted for for review last time.
Thanks, Matt. Megan, Joanne, any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, thanks.
I do want to, I do want to point out one thing, and I know some people say, why do we have regulations and, you know, why do we make people follow things? This is a prime example of why with surveying, when you do, when you record a new plan, the survey actually needs to get out there and measure the land to see what's going on. In talking to to David, he told me there were some issues out there, and sure enough, they show up on the plan where Daniel Road is, is registered land, so it's gone through the land court process where they've gone through and checked everything, but in reality, it looks like it was laid out incorrectly. So there's some issues out there that the previous survey really should have picked up on and never did, because I don't believe he actually did much of a survey, so. This is a prime example of why we have regulations and why they need to be followed, because there's some issues here that can affect a lot of people's properties, and, and we want to make sure that they're investigated before we approve a plan, so.
Just like, is there anything with this plan and Daniel Road that we should be concerned with for endorsing this plan?
Not, not endorsing it, no.
Okay.
So.
All right. And I imagine that has to do with the cul-de-sac and the way Daniel Road is laid out. Without looking up the requirements, is that what you're referring to, the Daniel Road part?
Yeah, yeah, there's some issues with monumentation that was set out there and things like that.
Okay.
Nothing to do with, with statutorily with us approving this or not. This goes into other people's issues, so.
Okay. Thanks. Um, any comments or questions from Bill Sullivan or Ken McCarthy? Anything need to be added or anything? Okay. We usually don't take any comments from the public, but I do see a couple of the people here. Are there any questions or comments?
I think Ken was speaking, but he was muted.
Oh, he was, okay.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Obviously, I had to double mute the computer in my phone here, so I just want to thank the board for, you know, making us do it the right way, and I really, I'm not familiar with surveys, so I appreciate you, you know, having go through the process, and I want to thank Bill Sullivan for, you know, all the legwork he did along with Mr. Dwyer, so just thank you very much.
It's good to hear. I know there's a lot of effort put in to make sure this checklist works, and we're seeing better plans, and we're able to review tonight and make a decision, which helps a lot. Thanks, Ken. Okay, with that, do, Matt, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to endorse the plan of land of 225 Vernon Street, Wakefield, Mass., prepared for William Sullivan by Audi and Dwyer surveyors, dated January 8th, 2020.
You have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thanks, Megan. All in favor endorsing the plan as Matt made in his motion?
Hi.
Hi. The record show four in favor of the four members that attended.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that motion, it was January 2021, not 2020.
Oh, good catch. You know, I was more concerned with the, the address and everything. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Dwyer.
I'm still writing my checks wrong, so don't worry.
Right. I thought it was pretty cool the other day when it was I wrote that. I'm like, hey, that's kind of cool. All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for reissuing the plan and putting it all together. We really appreciate that as a board. It's so much easier to review and look at, and the meetings are so much easier because of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Item number four on tonight's agenda. Wow, it's usually like 8:30 when we get to the start. Items not anticipated by the chair. So I do have a few. There's some there's a couple of things going on. One, I just received an email from Paul DiNocco, Town Council. So I haven't really got a chance to read through this, but he's asking if two people from the planning board that worked on the Butler Ave project, and if you're not familiar with what's happening up on Butler Ave, there was a subdivision that was in front of the board, and I think, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but we went for about a year and a half working on that plan with a developer and the butters to really come to a plan that kind of worked, but what happened is the land, as the developer found out, was contaminated from Wakefield's former high school debris being buried on the land. So what happened is the development did not go forward at Butler Ave. The town, at-town meeting was approved to purchase the land. So the land is now purchased, and Mr. DiNocco would like to get together with two members of the planning board to just review what's going on with the property. I think he wants a little background. Again, I haven't reviewed all of this, but he's looking for input for a Zoom meeting. And Matt, since Bill is not here this evening, would maybe you and I can get together and talk about what works for a good time? For this?
Yep.
Excellent. And I'm sure, I know, I'll dig up the meeting notes and whatever else I have on that, just to make sure we follow, but that, that was a pretty extensive review of the plans. Another thing on the not anticipated this evening. Thank you, Susan, for dropping off the Board of Appeals information. January 19th, the Board of Appeals put together a package for 44, 46, 48 Crescent Street. So Crescent Street, if you remember, was in front of Town Council for an apartment, multifamily dwelling, and this is on Crescent Street on the Water Street side. So on the Water Street side, there's like a house, a house, a gas station or house, and then right behind there, there is three or four pieces of property that would be developed. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board, that this has actually come up as a 40B. So if you're not sure of what a 40B is, it's a different requirement set of steps, so it's not through, it's through the zoning board of appeals as it goes through the planning board does not have any meetings or anything on that, but we do have say when it comes to different things in here, like parking and snow and what's happening with. Sorry if you just heard my cats fighting. I just wanted to bring this up with the board. If you did get a chance to look at this, it would be a good project to look, to follow through the ZBA and to see how it works out. So the 40B process is mapped out by the state, so contractors or developers will take that route to, because they know it's a set way to, for approvals. So our zoning board still has some say in what happens, obviously, with our zoning bylaws, but there are different things that they, they do follow a different streamlined path. Does anybody have any comments or anything to say about the 40B at Crescent?
Yeah. Is 40B mean that it's affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what it comes under as a stature. It means, right now, right now, we ask for 18% of multifamily housing units to be affordable. And the Board of Appeals works out how that breaks down, whether there's two units that are two-bedroom, a couple of one-bedrooms, a studio, and, and that call, that falls under the state guidelines for what affordable housing units would, would be, like a lower percentage of the actual retail or rate. The reason we ask for 18% is because we're behind in where we want to be as a town, and we want to get up to that. I can't remember where we are. Erin, you might know, because you've been looking at it. I think we're around eight or nine percent.
Yeah, I'm working through the numbers now. We're not, for the city, you should be 10, but yeah, we're not quite there yet, so.
So getting up to that 10, we're, we're asking for 18%. And sometimes it's a little bit lower, depending on what's happening with the property and hardships, and we've been vocal about that as a planning board.
Do you, do you know anything about the background on the project? I mean, for me, it's new. And I'm kind of curious why they chose the location they chose and who the developer is, because I looked at it, I looked at the site, and I looked at.
Oh, I, I'm not sure, and Erin might have a little bit more information. My point of bringing it up tonight is a good one to follow. On the plans, Phoenix was the architects out of Melrose and Crescent Commons. I know Crescent Commons Development LLC is out of Saugus, and it's on the, the plans. A lot of times, from my experience, these development, these companies are made just for these developments, so I'm not sure who the the landowner is and everything on it.
I don't have that information readily available, but I can find out for you.
Yeah, that would be good to know, because there are three houses there and right now that would need to be raised. And all three of them look like they're occupied, and, and they're pretty nice houses, so it's, to me, it's kind of like, it's sort of a weird place to put a big apartment building when what's there right now looks pretty good.
Right.
So I am wondering if they bought all three of those properties in a row at the same time, or how that all came about, because looks kind of like, it's near Crescent Arms. It's kind of near Crescent Arms, but it's going to look a lot different than what's there now.
I know when it was in front of Town Council, they were really concerned with the height and the parking that came up. And I followed along with that meeting, but I didn't watch the ZBA meeting to, to get the background on what happened. I don't know if anybody else did. It's on my list. It's on my playlist.
Yeah, right. Let me know when the movie's going on.
Well, somebody's probably making a movie about Wakefield, I'm sure. I don't know.
But I can find out more information for everyone, if you'd like, me too, yeah.
The only, one more thing I wanted to bring up, and this is somebody I've been following on Twitter. His name is Jonathan Burke, and if you do find him on Twitter, he posts a lot. He had commented, I do follow Julie Smith Galvin, one of our town counselors, with the Safe Streets Working Group and different things, which actually the meetings tonight as well. And I noticed this, this gentleman, Jonathan Burke, posting a lot to Twitter on safe streets, what's happening around Boston, so he must be a local. I haven't looked into it enough. But if you do find some time and you are on Twitter or you have a chance to look him up, I'm looking for the correct spelling of his name. Jonathan Burke, B-E-R-K. And he posts a lot of things about Boston, about urban development. He seems to be on top of what's happening. If you're interested, just another person to follow or look up with a lot of information. That's all I have tonight. Any other members of the board have anything they want to share? Matt?
Um, the only thing I'm going to say again is, I wish some of these ZBA submittals we get are on PDFs, because I can't read some of these plans anymore. They're all reduced size, and it's really hard to see if there actually are any issues there, so they're asking us to comment on, on plans that are almost illegible, so.
Yeah.
So I want to give, yeah, the, all you guys an update, so I am working on getting everyone an email address. I know that's not across the board, everyone happy, but I think legally, it's probably the best thing to do. Secondly, I have a meeting with Lexington, with Susan involved, and Gail, and Sherry to get some middles for any plans coming in online through our website, so we're going to meet with them this week and try to get that up and going with our website while we're trying to update our website as well. So, you know, we're just, we're making movement. It's not very fast, but we're, we're getting it done, so. Hopefully, I have more updates for you guys in two weeks about where we're at, but I just wanted to give that to you.
When you say Lexington, is that a company or the town?
The town. Because they, because they've, they use the same software system we do, and they've started to doing the submittal processes, like submitting plans to the planning board and ZBA through their website, so we're just looking for them for some input.
Oh, that's good.
I think, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, I know, because we've been talking and trying to get this going, too. Our goal is, and this is something the Inspection Services, the Building Department already uses, where when plans come in, they're recorded, PDFs, whatever. The big ultimate dream goal would be, is if you could log on to our website, click on a button, go into the special committees and boards, and you can find Planning Board, and these drawings and documents would be there, and you can read through and just check the box, meaning Joanne checks her box, Matt checks her box, and you just go through, because you, you, that would be your not authorization, but like an electronic signature that you reviewed the items.
Yeah, exactly. So that's what we're looking into. And then also, when the other departments within the whole thing can check off what they've looked at, so. Something we're doing very quickly, hopefully. I think we have to change some things through bylaws, at least through the ZBA and probably the planning board with the 10 copies. But I think it'll make everyone's life a little easier, I hope.
Really hoping that this happens, yes, it's, it would be great.
But it's, it's also going to be up to the boards to actually push that, too. I know in our, in our regulations, we, one of the requirements is that they submit a PDF, because I, I put that in there, and we, I think we have that for our regular submission. So the developers should be including those with all the submissions anyways. I don't know if the ZBA does that, you know.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I know, so that's why Gail's part of the conversation, Susan as well, myself. I just want to make it consistent, even with the emails. I feel like the ZBA, and that's on my decision, the bigger conversation, but they should probably have their own emails, too. And so no, I agree. I mean, I think whatever we can do to make things easier for the public and easier for us as, you know, departments and you guys as well, will make, and streamline everything would be great.
Yeah, so I, I know we, we didn't really discuss this yet, but there's an A and R, there's a, there was a Mylar that should have been submitted with this A and R, was, did we get that? Okay, so that needs to get passed around to get endorsed, correct?
I got it dated and, yeah, I, I mean, I thought it was sent around.
No, so each, so now that it's approved, each board member needs to sign that.
Right.
So we, we need to, you know, that's got to get sent to everyone's houses, or we need to have a place to come sign it.
Okay.
We need to in that, see, these are the new issues that have come up that we really don't have a procedure for, because it's all basically new. So.
No, that's a good point. Thank you.
But with, with the PDFs, at least, we could get all of, especially the ZBA stuff, we could get them, they'd be basically full-size plans that we can zoom in and, and look at, which would definitely be helpful, so.
Agreed.
I, I haven't looked through the, their submission requirements, but I'm guessing it doesn't specify that a PDF is required, so they may need to actually update their, their rules and regs, or however they, you know, whatever they're governed by, so.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Erin. And Erin, we can talk about the Mylar, too, and we've, we've been lucky to have Brian McGrath, Attorney McGrath, where it's easy to get to his office and his assistant will drive them around and we can sign them, so that, that, that works, too. We can, we can figure that out. But to Matt's point, having some type of system, so the people who are submitting, not Attorney McGrath, how, they know what they're expected to do, and if we want to, as a board, push the delivery of those plans to each of us on them versus having Susan drive around or somebody else drive around, you, Erin, drive around and delivering these plans to the planning board for signatures. While we're still in this COVID no-town hall meeting, I think we need to figure that out.
Yeah, and you know, it, we could have it set up so at, at times, we can waive the 10 extra copies for us, because it's truthfully just, you know, it's going to get recycled. I, I'm used to not looking at paper plans, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't know about other people, but I'm all for trying to cut down on extraneous paper, if possible, too, so.
Right. Megan and Joanne, do you have any comments about that? Would you prefer paper over PDF?
No, I would definitely prefer PDF over paper.
Okay.
Just for the ability, right, to zoom in, to see it in a much better, much better way than the, than the paper copies.
Then there are some programs. I know in our office, we use BlueBean, but there's also free versions of Acrobat, but that, I believe, allows some markups if you did want to make electronic notes and if we wanted to share. Joanne, do you prefer paper or PDF?
Yeah, I think I've said before I like paper.
Yep.
But I, I certainly understand and agree with everybody's points about being able to see and zoom and, you know, get a bigger perspective, and, you know, a more targeted perspective if you have the PDF, so I guess my answer would be both.
Okay.
That's my preference, but. And, and that's because I don't really want to have, I agree, you know, I don't like wasting paper either, but I kind of like looking at the paper, and I don't really want to have to print them, because, I mean, my printer and, you know, the cost for me to print them, and also, that's my preference.
And so what we could do with, if we do get PDFs and some members do prefer paper, is I can print them out at work or something and drop them off, and like, you know, there are ways around that, too, so. I'm, I guess I'm a little biased here. I'm looking at it from both ends, because I have to file these plans in at other towns and, you know, go through the, the legwork of, and it's an expense to, for someone to pick all these out and.
I certainly, so, yeah. I, I wouldn't want to be standing there at the copier, printing out these 30, 40-page documents, and some of these are pretty big. So, yeah, I get it.
Thank you.
We're all moving in the right direction, like how we wanted to go, but yeah, the Mylar, we'll, we'll figure that out. But every, it sounds like everyone else is on kind of the same page, but we can accommodate people otherwise, too. every, it sounds like everyone else is on kind of the same page, but we can accommodate people otherwise too.
Nice.
Yeah, and, and for the Mylar, if one person gets it and drops it off the next, we can just have a chain of, of, you know, can can bring it to the next person or, so, no.
That's worked well for other projects.
I don't want any one person to have to do all the work either, so.
Right.
And I'm happy to be the start of that chain if, if we want this time, that, that way I can put my um, my, my papers, so you guys can all sign them as well.
Or even the nomination.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, that's a topic for discussion, right?
Sure, well.
If you have a big enough front porch, you can just leave the plans of, all, all the paper and the plans, and we can sign everything at once and uh, move on, so.
Excellent. Any, um, any other planning board members have comments, not anticipated, topics not anticipated? Susan?
Well, do you, do you want me to drop the moth tomorrow to Megan's?
I think that works. I would suggest after the snow stops, which I think was around nine, not, I don't know if that matters where they're being left, but yes.
Okay.
And I just maybe work with Megan. I am home tomorrow, so I can also be on that chain and drop things off too.
Why don't I drop them off at your house, because you have your front porch? At lunchtime? I can do that at lunchtime.
And then I can bring them to Megan's. That works.
Okay.
Yep. So, we have an enclosed little vestibule, so it's
Oh, nice.
weather tight. If Susan remembers to close the door, it's weather tight.
Okay.
And just remember, they, they might be a plastic plan, but the ink on them is water soluble and, and will, so make sure it's, it's wrapped up tight, because a little bit of water will ruin it, so.
Yeah, and I have um, I have a plastic tube as well, if you don't, usually like um, um, just a, like a white trash bag works, kitchen trash bag, if you don't have something. All right, any other comments from members of the board?
I, I picked up my um, papers, and Susan was a super big help in helping get signatures from different members of Town Hall, so again, thank you, Susan, for your help in that, and uh, working to get my fifty-plus signatures in the COVID times, so any and all of your signatures would be greatly appreciated.
Fifty-four, fifty-five would be safe, and it's, it's usually because there might be somebody who's not a registered voter that signs it, or it could be that you just, they can't read the writing.
Yeah, and I saw Joanne, I saw your name above mine a little bit up on the list, so I saw that your picture is up too.
Awesome.
Yeah, I, I think I must have picked it up right before you, and I, I guess we were in the paper a couple of times, so, at least I was, so that's exciting, huh?
Yay.
Yay.
I know when I ran, I actually pulled some ads on the item a couple of times. I was running, excuse me, I ran um, as a write-in candidate, so it was, it was interesting.
Oh, wow. Very interesting, yeah, well, Bill, you're in my neighborhood, so maybe I can drop by and get your signature one of these days.
It works. Give me a call first and I'll let you know if I'm home.
Okay.
Sorry, I've been running.
Is your daughter going to run for the board?
Ian.
Hi.
Run, you say hi. I come down here, they find me.
So, we, um, Theo um, also pulled papers, I believe.
Yes.
So, you're here, and I know um, not to make the, the race any tighter or have an, uh, election, but uh, you also pulled papers and running for the board, um.
Yeah, let me, let me introduce myself, and, and first off, um, uh, I thought there were two open vacancies uh, for, you know, total disclosure, because um, I think it's a, it's, it's really terrific that, that y'all are longstanding volunteers for the, for the town. Um, the, and, and, and that's to be uh, uh, recognized and, and, and gratitude expressed, especially now with COVID, like, it's got to be like an incredibly difficult time to, to volunteer and, and do like really important, like, local government functions. Um, so, remote, and, and like, and little stuff really matters a big deal, paper or, or PDF or whatever, so. Um, the um have, had the opportunity to know Matt a little bit, um, and, and, you know, I'm longstanding resident of Wakefield with uh, a daughter graduating high school. Um, so, uh, everything about Wakefield is great, and it's, so it's nice to be in a, a position to be able to volunteer in um a more organized, direct, and uh, uh, I think a larger public role, um, rather than, you know, just sort of ad hoc volunteering um, around the town or what have you. Um, I have a planning and uh, community development, um, uh, housing, finance, real estate background, so um, that's why the, the, the board is of interest to me, so, um, but um yeah, so it's nice to uh, sit in and, and see y'all in action, so. I'm happy to.
Welcome.
More or less, but.
All right, welcome, and I did, um, sorry to put you on the spot.
Not at all.
inviting you to the meeting tonight, so you could see it. I wish you got to see a different meeting, where there was a lot more interaction, and you could see where this one um, might be our shortest meeting in about a year.
All right, all right.
I don't know, Matt.
Definitely this year, that's for sure, so.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to make it any longer, because that, that would just be punishing y'all.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, no.
Well, you can come to the February ninth meeting.
Oh, I, I definitely will, um, and uh, I mean, and um, for recognition, right, there still is a lot of unfinished business, right, so.
Yep. Um, yeah, there's, and every month, something else comes in. Erin can open up her mailbox tomorrow morning and see like a another big development somewhere or a subdivision or whatever. Thanks.
Um, I, I, just as a neighbor, and um, uh, I have a fair amount of um you know, housing finance background, and particularly around forty B, um, and, and things like that, so happy to be a resource um, to folks. Um, so, there's, you know, it can be confusing, so.
Thanks, Derek.
For myself, sure.
So, with that, any other not anticipated? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thanks, Megan. Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
All right, thanks, Erin. Good seeing you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Bye.